You do?
I did.
You talking about the potatoes or barbecue?
All of them.
Is it my zucchini, zucchini?
They're surprised.
Yeah. I'm gonna go check out their potatoes, I'm. Cause I know one. Man, I don't like barbecue, so I don't care too much about it.
Oh, I love barbecue.
I know they got some potatoes.
Who is this?
Are they big as loris?
I wouldn't eat pork for barbecue. I love barbecue.
You mean you don't like barbecue?
Yeah, good, good. Evan just came in from South Carolina.
I don't, I don't, I ain't no pork.
He's going to Liberty College.
Man, he was trying to get something else. It's the only thing there I eat.
What country, how?
I can do without.
It came here. Say what? I stopped him saying it, it came here.
But I'm gonna go check their potatoes. Why can't this week, are they closing?
Just another subject to cry about, right?
Wow. They sent down a whole restaurant. For vacation. That's big, right there. Sound like a good place to work. I'm sure they closed for Christmas too.
Well, they, they have such a limited workforce. I'm pretty sure your Dan's been around, Dan.
It's five o'clock.
I'm pretty sure he's.
Time to, uh, convene our work session. Uh, welcome everyone. Gina.
To clarify.
Is everybody's mic on? Okay, go ahead please.
To clarify, this is a monthly work session of the mayor and council. This is a meeting that is held each month to allow the members to discuss specific items in preparation for the regular council meeting, which is held the second Tuesday of each month. The dialogue of this meeting will be between the mayor, council, and staff members only. The time for the citizen's involvement will come at the regular meeting to be held next Tuesday during the citizens' input proportion of the meeting. We respectfully ask that you hold your comments or any questions until that time unless called upon. Once the meeting is adjourned, we ask that everyone exit the meeting room, um, in a proper and timely manner. Thank you.
Okay, our first item, Gina.
Item one, discuss and consider approval of Resolution twenty-five dash ten, a resolution to support the TVA Columbia Dam Project on the Duck River. Resolution twenty-five-ten was deferred on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting, until July eighth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting. And it was presented by Councilman Burns first time, on May thirteenth.
Oh, it was discussed at the Community Development Board meeting. It's a, just a letter of support. It's, it's not anything binding, so. It would be no harm to do it.
The Water Department has done a resolution.
Does anybody have any objections to it being on the agenda for Tuesday? Anyone? Okay, let's move on.
Item two, request for the appointment of Luke Buckley to the Industrial Development Board to replace the vacancy seat of Mr. Eddie Wiles due to resignation, which term ends June first, um, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, before we discuss that, uh, my, uh, sorry neighbor has brought us watermelons and brownies and, uh, strawberries. I can't tell you how much how, what great neighbor Eddie Wiles is, but I bring his name up to say how many, for how many years he has served so faithfully in that position of the IDB. There's a whole lot's happened under his tenure. And I think, I know I'm grateful for his service, and I think that's probably unanimous. So Eddie, we thank you very much for that and for the strawberries and, shall I give you anything else?
I didn't give you strawberries.
I didn't either.
Larry, thank you for the re, thank you for the resignation, but all that was for Carolyn.
Oh! We don't want to talk about Carolyn. All right, but any, anybody got any questions about Mr. Luke Buckley, who's present position is, uh, president of the First Commerce Bank?
I know y'all have his, uh, resume or his bio in front of you. Uh, I wanted to further introduce Luke to you. He is originally from Lincoln County. He married a local girl here with, and he has four daughters. He's here in the audience right now. If you want to ask him any questions, he will not be here next week. Uh, he has a previously scheduled vacation time, where I'm sure his wife and daughters would appreciate it if he showed up for that. So he is here today.
Anybody have any questions for Luke? Luke, would you like to say anything?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity and thank you to Eddie for, uh, recommending me for, for this position and apologize, won't be here next week, um, rescheduled, but look forward to learning and, and hopefully helping in any way I can.
Thank you. So without objection, it will be on the agenda for Tuesday. Next item.
Item three, review and discuss adopting the International Property Maintenance Code, which will, will replace chapter thirteen of the municipal codes in its entirety.
Chris?
Hey. Hopefully, everybody had the opportunity to look at the two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. Um, it covers a wide range. It covers your grass vehicles, abandoned homes, unsafe. It's very much clarifies the definitions, and what currently we have is a lot of the language, you know, this is just basically spells it out in more defined terms. Uh, does anybody have any, some questions or anything about it?
Is there anything contained in our municipal codes that we would lose if we?
Uh, no. No, this is, it actually expands on some of it. So, um, basically, we do, we don't lose anything about that, and it does expand on our current municipality codes. Actually, it spans on it.
Good.
Uh, just a couple of things you should note. Uh, there will be a board created, uh, you know, a minimum of three people, just for, they have opportunity to appeal the interpretation of this, that, you know, is a three-person panel, secretary, a chairman, and another member is a minimum of three, and they have opportunity to come before and speak about it if we misinterpret these codes, uh, what it's about. Is anybody having other questions?
Well, I was gonna ask Mr. Hutto, uh, this was gonna require a resolution. Uh, do you need, is this too quick for you to react to? Have you reviewed it thoroughly?
I, I just now sent it to him. It was, so I apologize for that. I apologize for Hutto earlier. I just now sent him over a couple hours ago. I was having tough time actually sending him the PDF version of it, so that was on me, so he didn't have opportunity to, uh, view it for, uh, yet.
Um, so generally, when you take an international code like this, you simply have an ordinance saying that, you know, ordinance thirteen dash one oh one, Lewisburg adopts the twenty-eighteen International Property Maintenance Code with the following, um, amendment. It's much like we did with the, the fire code earlier the year. Um, so it'd be something similar to that, and we, and if there are any specific paragraphs that we changed, you know, we, instead of creating a board, we could just make that one of the duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals and name them as the board, and then we'd probably spell out who the enforcement officer is, being the code director, saying that it's always the head of the planning department, just, you have to pull it in. We, and we can certainly, probably do that by next week, I would think.
So you think he'd be ready for that, or do we need to delay it?
It would unless there were some, um, something, things in here that wanted to be, you know, the, the council wanted to be different from how the, this basic code is, but it pretty much tracks in, it's just organized differently with, you know, our, uh, unfit or unsafe housing ordinances, it tracks in with the property maintenance ordinances. We have to set the, you know, one of the thing, things you have to set is the height of the grass, which is one of the things we're talking about, the height it should be, and then it should, I think the goal is to streamline how enforcement occurs so that it's, you know, kind of an administrative ticket people get. They get notice of it. They have to pay their ticket. If they don't pay their ticket or fix the problem, then the city can step in and fix the problem under this code as well, or they can contract with somebody to do it, and, and then if nothing's paid at that point, then, uh, the city can assess that fine, and they can turn it over to the courts as well for collection.
So do you feel you've had ample time to review it between now and Tuesday, or would you like a little more time?
I mean, I think I can review it and have, um,
Any suggestions?
Any suggestions and amendments in that ordinance adopting it to say, we're gonna do, do these and not do these, and the question is, is that really, is that enough time for the council to have it back and review it?
Cause we have a holiday on Friday, and I gotta have it out by Friday.
Would it do any harm to move it to the next, to the next month then? I've forgotten about that.
Uh, no, I mean, I don't think it can do any harm, but it's up to City Attorney Hutto, and if you guys have any kind of modifications to it you guys want to see.
Well, how do you feel? Let's do it next, next month, or try to squeeze it in Tuesday?
I'm okay with trying to squeeze it in.
Get, get it done. I think, I think they can have it in view for that.
How do y'all feel?
I'm fine with it by Thursday.
Okay. Without objection, it'll be on the agenda. Next item.
Item four, review and discuss updating the municipal codes, title thirteen, chapter two, section thirteen dash two-one-two, enforcement number seven. Chris?
Okay, this is basically our current, you know, prosecution of repeat violators, but if we're adopting the International Property Maintenance, this item is no longer relevant. But this was something that was requested at last work session, hey, for repeat violators, and this would spell out the violation and the penalty behind it. Since, but since we're gonna adopt the two thousand eighteen, this agenda item is no longer relevant.
Okay, so that will not be on the agenda. Okay, next item.
Item five, consider owner requests for rezoning property located at six fifty Spring Place Road, map zero-seven-one-B, group C, parcel zero-two-six-point-zero-zero, within the corporate limits of the city of Lewisburg, from I-one light industrial to C-two intermediate business. Planning Commission gave favorable recommendation by vote five to zero.
Uh, this is just a straight, uh, rezoning change from light industrial to C-two because the applicant requests a business license, but at, that is not allowed in I-one. Uh, he's doing auto repairs, and auto repairs are only allowed in C-two, and that would be the best change here, is just the rezoning of it. So this is just a straight rezoning request.
Is this the Dream Machine's request?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
He's gonna be restoring old cars.
What's Dream Machine?
Dream Machine.
Is vintage cars and everything?
Vintage cars, he's gonna be restoring.
Is this to do with the West Commerce Museum?
Uh, no, that's different. It's out there real close to the railroad tracks on Spring Place.
Everybody have additional questions, objections? Without objection, it'll be on the agenda. Tuesday, next.
Item six, request by Marshall County Highway Department to annex a proportion of Globe Road into the corporate limits of the city of Lewisburg, Tennessee. Approximately point-seven-five miles of Globe Road described as, from the north starting point of where the current city limits ends, going south, point-seven-five, to the end of the unaddressed Globe Road, map zero-sixty-nine, parcel zero-five-five-point-zero-zero. The Planning Commission gave an unfavorable recommendation, zero to five vote. Chris?
Okay, basically, we have received a applicant, uh, from Marshall County requesting we annex roads. Uh, two of them are still in the Planning Commission. We are still getting a legal opinion from Hutto on Finley Beach and, um, Robin Hood Road, but the Planning Commission went ahead and gave an unfavorable recommendation on Globe Road. And this what's going on here. This is a request to annex point-seven-five miles of it. Uh, this would match our current city limits out there in Globe Road. Uh, do anybody have any specific questions? I'm not aware of any kind of projects going on out there currently, so this is just, you know, basically something we're gonna try to be ahead of, you know, any kind of major project going on up there.
The thought process is, as far as I know, there is not a single city dwelling on this part of Globe Road. We're not gonna be building out there in the near future, and so why will we maintain a road that have, that has no city structures on it?
Exactly.
So.
Was that the thoughts of the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. So, you know, if the, when the, we have water available, and if that property is sold for a subdivision, we can address it at the time. But who's to say that property won't be sold for a horse farm?
Correct. It could be, uh,
We don't know what's gonna be there.
It could be also a commercial. Only thought process is there, if they do a site plan, and the site plan requires road improvements, we don't have the ability to approve those road improvements because that's a county road. As, uh, I think Hutto can ask if we have the power to make road improvements to a county road or not. So that's a legal question.
But right now, we don't anticipate making any.
Correct. I don't have anything, any kind of current projects going on to, to that area.
Well, and the, the county guy was kinda snarky.
Well, yes.
At the, at the meeting. I mean, he came and just basically said,
You will know this.
If you don't do this, we're not gonna allow you access to anything off that road.
That's exactly what he said.
But those are, it's a public road.
It's a public road, public county road.
I don't, that's, Mr. Hutto was researching that to be sure. Uh, ma'am, uh, tell us what you, related to that, what you've requested, Chris?
Oh, we're gonna try to, uh, see how much road sidewalk and infrastructure we're taking in with all these developments that we're gonna have to take care of anyway, and the sewer. Uh, that's something that's gonna take a while with all these developments, but you can just imagine with the size of these developments, what we're taking in, so.
Yeah, we're taking in not only the road, we're taking in curb and gutter, we're taking in a storm sewer system, uh, we're taking in sidewalks,
Yep.
We're taking in water lines and sanitary sewer. We're talking about miles of it that are going to be, we're gonna be responsible for. Not initially, but as they were out, it's on us.
I believe you're talking about the current subdivisions and everything out on Finley Beach Road and everything. Um, we can, uh, resolve those issues in our, you know, uh, basically subdivision regulations and in our PUD moving forward, we can update those. If, hey, if we don't like the miles of infrastructure, we can increase density and have more open spaces. So there's, uh, ways we can do this through policymaking, to limit the infrastructure that is being built to, basically, we can solve that issue as well through, you know, updating our zoning.
If we, if, ma'am, if we had to pave this road, which I think it's a pretty good road now, but point-seven-five miles of road, just if we had to pave it today, you, you, what would it cost? What would it cost us?
Well, a mile of road, the last time I did one, was over a hundred thousand dollars a mile.
Okay, so, at least a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, yeah, okay.
So it needs to be on the agenda, but it's, uh, correct, or does it stop here?
No, it would need to be on the agenda, the, uh, either have a unanimous vote, well, a near unanimous vote in favor of it, or a vote against it, cause the Planning Commission just makes recommendations that we then vote on.
Any further questions about it? So it'll be on the agenda Tuesday. All right, next item.
Item seven, consider adopting a plan of service for the annexation of Globe Road of approximately point-seven-five miles of Globe Road described as, from the north starting point of where the current city limits ends, going south, point-seven-five miles to the end of the unaddressed Globe Road, map zero-six-nine, parcel zero-five-five-point-zero-zero. Chris?
Uh, this is just basically the plan of service. This is, this basically outlining when fire's gonna take, you know, responsibility, police, public works, and everything like that. Uh, this is just, you know, the, uh, the department has reviewed this, and they have approved that section of it.
But if the annexation fails, then this would not.
Correct, sir.
Okay. All right, any questions? Next item.
Item eight, consider deeding a small proportion of city right-of-way located on East Hill Avenue to Mr. Bruce Seacrest. Mr. Seacrest wants to restore and maintain a old wall that is set on his property and the city right-of-way. Brandon?
Everybody's pretty familiar with this rock wall that we're talking about.
Is it across somewhere, those little townhouses?
Yes, ma'am. And it's not the entire wall. I wanna say, um, majority of the wall is his. There's only a portion of it that is in city right-of-way, and I believe Chris had it surveyed about a week or so ago.
Correct.
And, um, we would like to just basically cut out the wall part and give that to him. That way, he could take care of it with his property. He's expressed that he would like to put money into this rock wall. However, he felt that it was improper if it wasn't entirely his.
So is this the last house as you go towards, uh, where the nine-one-ones?
Well, he owns all of them now.
Last house on the right, ma'am.
He owns all the houses on the, that whole corner, I think there's.
Right, this particular rock wall is in front of the first house on the right, the red brick?
Yes. This would be the first one, right in the curb.
Right in the curb, so.
The last house, he owns that wall.
And you go straight.
So it's the first one?
It's the first one, yes, sir.
I thought you told me the day was the blue house they're remodeling.
The blue house they're remodeling, yeah. He owns that one as well.
But is that the wall we're talking about?
No, he already owns that wall. It's, it's right there in the curb part. It's just a piece of it.
What do you, what do you, fifty, a hundred square feet, something like that?
I don't know, I didn't see that.
I don't have the legal description yet. I didn't want to, uh, continue to pay, you know, money for it. I just wanted to see if the council would be in favor of giving up that. Now I can give you guys the legal description of it as well. This is just basically getting the feedback here, uh, for, for y'all to say if you're.
If y'all are even interested in doing this, to proceed with this, before we spend any more money on it.
Okay.
I think Chris was telling me that the guy was gonna restore this wall, a historical wall person is gonna come in and, and, and take care of it.
Correct. He's gonna hire a person who specializes in restoring historical stone walls and everything, how he was explaining to us, and he said the estimate, I believe, was like two hundred and fifty dollars per scrap of.
Every five foot or so, yeah, it was, it was a small amount, but it's.
Well, let's put it this way. Does anybody here have an objection to pursuing this?
Well, I, I don't know that the city actually needs to deed anything, because I looked at, uh, Mr. Seacrest's deeds, and all his deeds say the legal description goes up to the margin of Hill Street. So, and that, you know, right-of-way is not, it, an ownership, it's a right to use it. So the public and the city, they have a right to go up and down Hill Street. The city has a right to maintain however wide out from the city, or the center line of Hill Street that they have, and the question is, how wide is that right-of-way? Cause Hill Street's not very wide, and it's, I think, been there a long time, so, you know, its right-of-way might be a, a foot past the margin, or, or who knows, uh, without a, a lot of research into, uh, a lot of old deeds that still may not say something. So I think with him owning the property, he owns land underneath it, he just has to, um, deal with the city on, from some portion of the edge of the street back into his property. So he could, he can certainly go ahead and maintain that wall, I think, without a problem. Yeah, what, what the city's interested in is that he doesn't dig a big hole next to the street and create a drainage ditch where he doesn't need one, or he doesn't, you know, put a, something perpendicular out that will come up to the edge of the street that'll be dangerous for cars going by if they swerve into it, but it, you know, maintaining the wall as it is, I think he can do that. I don't know that the city needs to take any action. They, the city has like a police power to enforce its goals of free access, but, uh, I don't know that we need to deed anything or, or redetermine the right-of-way, cause, uh, that would probably just get expensive.
I've never seen any specific right-of-way for that street over the years, and usually what is there is recognized as
Right.
the property. So what you're suggesting is, uh, so long as he doesn't do some great damage and restores what's, he's restoring what's there. Is he repairing it or restoring it?
Restoring it.
Restoring it?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be in the same place? You're saying we don't need to?
I don't think so. I think he can just have, have the go-ahead to restore that wall and, uh, not put anything any closer to it, or as long as it doesn't move towards Hill Street, it's fine.
Mayor, question, when you're ready?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm, I mean, I'm not against deeding him to the wall or whatever we need to do, but just wanna remind everybody, when the gentleman from the lake came before us and wanted to, uh, secure a little piece of property out there to the lake, I think, I think he was here, Mr. Hutto, but we, we, we couldn't give it to him. We, we'd had to auction it off, so to speak. So just wanna make sure we treating everybody the same. If we got to auction it off, we do. If we don't have to deed it to him, then.
Well, that's, that's the other thing. The city does, there's not actually any deed anywhere to the city that says that it owns the roads. It's usually a dedication that occurs when subdivisions or neighborhoods are created. There's an, either express dedication or there's just general usage when streets are laid out. Um, but even, even the streets downtown, you know, there's not a deed to, and that's just a plan that the city laid out a long, long, long time ago, and everyone's got a right to use them, and the city's got the right, it's the only one with the right to put utilities under them and things like that.
Any further questions? So Chris, I think what you're saying is.
Is this him off a letter and telling him he can restore the wall? Is him off a letter just, uh,
Sure.
basically, you know, permission, is that correct?
Well, he needs to be reminded of what Mr. Hutto says, that he needs, it has to be restored right where it is and not do any damage
Correct.
to the road.
Okay, I will send him off a letter just stating, you know, what Mr. Hutto has said, you know, no issues with restoring the wall. I don't think he has any, uh, I don't think he has any desire to move the wall or anything like that. I think he just wants to make sure that if he does restore the wall, he doesn't want the city coming and basically, you know, expanding right-of-way and improve the roads and, hey, you know, they have to tear down the wall.
Also.
That's only concern, I believe, he had.
The other concern that he expressed also was to make sure that his homeowner's insurance would cover it if somebody ever backed into it or something like that. Would, because the property pin is behind the wall, would his homeowner's insurance still cover it? After he puts a lot of money in. That's, that was the other concern he expressed to me.
How did they determine that it was on the right-of-way? I've never seen anything on there to indicate that there's a specific.
We, they did a, a survey of the property itself. The property pins are actually behind the wall on, on one piece of it, and then it crosses over midway to the other side. That's where he was concerned about. If, if that property's not his, and it is in right-of-way, will his homeowner's insurance cover it if somebody backed into it after he sunk a bunch of money to restore it?
That'd be his homeowner's, that'd be some of the homeowner's, his insurance policy to answer.
Correct.
I don't know that we could answer that.
We can't answer that question.
I think we're taking something simple and making it complicated.
Build a wall.
I think if you tell him, just don't do something to damage our road and put it back where it is, is that?
Have that.
Anybody got any?
Have that, and we can't answer an insurance question. Check with your homeowner's policy. They'd have to answer that.
Yeah, that would be my answer, and, and, you know, we can say that there's no plans to, to expand Hill Street or anything on it at this time, or likely to be.
No, I don't think we need to take, but, Mr. Hutto, we don't have to take a roll call on this Tuesday, do we?
No.
Permit?
I don't believe so. I think, I think.
Okay, next item.
Cause that one would be left on.
Yes, that's, that'll be left on.
Item nine, consider Mr. Hutto's request to receive the city of Lewisburg medical insurance and a TCRS. Uh, Mr. Hutto's service agreement goes with item ten also. Uh, Councilman Michael.
Yes, I put this on here, and we, we discussed it during the budget meeting, our last budget meeting. This letter was written on June the second, and we have yet to give Mr. Hutto a formal answer. And so the, um, the Budget Committee, uh, addressed this last time, and it was determined that he is un, um, qual, he doesn't qualify for TCRS due to being part-time, and that it was, um, our finance, uh, department's opinion not to put him on the insurance. And this is just to request either the city manager or the mayor to formally, uh, write Mr. Hutto a letter letting him know those things.
Were there questions? Is this an agenda item?
No, I would think so, not as long as the letter gets written. But he deserves an answer, and it's been a month.
Okay. So, does anybody have a different opinion what the Budget Committee suggested?
No, it's what Ms. Owen suggested, right?
Right, our finance guy suggested. TCRS is not an option, because he's part-time. And then the medical was our finance department determined it was not a very good thing to do. So we did, the Budget Committee said no. We just need some, one of these two guys to let him know that formally.
So that doesn't require a vote or anything, it's just?
Just a letter. Just a letter.
Just a letter. Okay. Mr. Hutto, you wanna speak to that?
Well, yeah, that's, that's all I was really needing. I understand not being eligible for a retirement system. And then, you know, I don't, I don't know what the numbers are on the health insurance, so I can't. Initially, I don't, I don't know exactly how to respond to that, whether I can say, well, yeah, that is way too much just to add me, or I can say, well, I'll have to think about it, but it is what it is.
Mr. Owen, do you wanna speak to that portion? About the impact on the insurance?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a clear-cut case about the TCRS, but the. The other item that was brought up was the adding to the medical. And, you know, if it's family coverage, what's that? The cost is about, yeah. Yeah, for family coverage, the cost, total cost is about, close to two thousand dollars a month, twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, if you're an employee, they contribute about two hundred and twenty. So the net cost to the city is about seventeen hundred and eighty-one dollars. So Mr. Hutto not being actual employee, doesn't have the deductions taken out to pay towards it. So, so it'd be about a two thousand dollar cost to add per month, Mr. Hutto, and if he has family coverage. So that's the reason that we, you know, recommended against that, doing that in the Budget Committee meeting. We did not talk about, the other item in his, his letter, though, was to, you know, as far as adjustment to his, his fee. So that's between you guys.
That's next item.
You all and Mr. Hutto. But that was our thinking behind the decision we came to.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, let's go on to the next item.
Item ten, discuss and dra, draft a response to City Attorney Mr. Hutto's request for review of his service agreement.
What we just discussed is the same one.
It's, it's basically the same.
That just came out of the Budget Committee.
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of his service agreement?
It should be with you. It's attached.
Did I miss it?
Yep.
Sorry.
Item nine.
Sorry.
Item nine and ten.
Okay, thank you. So give us a synopsis of what that we're seeing. The existing agreement, or is he asking for?
Well.
An additional compensation?
Are you, well, if you read it on his letter, it says that these two options, which is the medical insurance and TCRS.
I told I silenced it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine. Are not possible, then a review of the hourly rate would be in order. So Debbie and I didn't communicate about which person was gonna put this on the agenda. So we both did. So, oh, we just need to draft Mr. Hutto a letter to, formally telling him we're, we cannot do that, and then let him let us know what his new hourly rate would be based, based on his letter. He said, he said he'd have to relook at his hourly rate.
Okay.
So, once we send him a letter, the ball's in his court, I think.
Yep, you, you make, you're gonna come back to us.
Yeah, I can certainly do that.
Permit?
Yeah, after looking at things, yeah, I wouldn't have thought that insurance would essentially double my costs, but.
So, after you see the letter, then you'll make a new proposal for your services?
Be happy to.
Okay.
So it doesn't need to be on next week's agenda either?
No, I wouldn't think so.
No.
So, any more questions? Thank you. Next item.
Item eleven, consider approval of fiscal year 2026 cost of living adjustment to be implemented effective June thirtieth, 2025. Allen?
Yes, this is a request, as Dana said, to implement the COLA effective June thirtieth. As you know, with the adoption of the budget for the new fiscal year beginning July one, there was a three percent cost of living adjustment. The problem is with our current payroll, that the city's had for quite a number of years, you're unable to have two different rates within the same pay period. So there is no way, even though it's just one day, to make, you know, to pro-rate that increase three percent for the one day of June thirtieth at the old rate, and the rest of the pay period at the new increase. So while we're looking at this, there are a couple of options that we see. The easiest one is just to make the three percent effective June thirtieth. That would increase the cost by about, for that one day, by about six hundred dollars. What it would do, though, is there'd be about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars that would actually be accrued into the prior year for the one day. But again, that cost of living would only be about six hundred dollars. The other way to do it is just to make it effective for the next full pay period that, in the month of July, which would not end until July twenty-seventh. That means that the checks, the people will not, will not reflect the checks, in their checks until July thirtieth. That's the next paid, actual pay date after the first full pay period in July. So we think that's a little bit, you know, unfair to make employees wait until the, towards the, almost the end of July to see any kind of an increase in their salary. So we thought that based upon the numbers, it would, implementation would be a lot easier just to make it effective June thirtieth. One day would be in the last fiscal year at the new rate. Talking to Gina this morning, this, you know, hap, it didn't happen last year because July one just happened to fall on the very first day of the pay, pay period. But in the past, I, you know, talking to Gina this morning, the city has basically up to maybe three days if that, you know, time period is such that the city council has made it effective for that first day, that may have fallen in towards the end of June. So again, it's just a timing issue and an administrative issue because of the payroll system that we are running currently.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
So we've pretty much closed out our June thirtieth. We amended the budget yesterday, right?
That's correct, yeah, we had a budget amendment, so.
This eighteen thousand dollars, so to speak, will have to come out of the.
It would be.
Last year's budget.
It would be, it would come out of last year's budget, that's correct.
But if we wait a couple of weeks and just do it the first payroll period in July.
Well, the first.
Then it's not, it's not gonna cost us that, because it's already built into the new budget, correct?
Right, the first, the first full payroll, and let's make clear, make sure we understand what we're talking about. First payroll period in July that has time in, worked in July, started yesterday, okay? That runs from June thirtieth until July thirteenth, okay? That's the next, the next full pay period starts July fourteenth and runs through the twenty-seventh, I believe.
So is the cost six hundred or eighteen thousand?
The actual cost, additional cost, would be about six hundred dollars.
Six hundred, so you have to make a budget amendment for six hundred dollars?
Well, yeah.
Okay, now, if we don't vote on it until next Tuesday, does that cause payroll an issue?
No, I don't know, because, no. We have time to make whatever adjustment that the council determines to make. We have time to do it. Because the actual checks, you know, we're doing checks this week, July third. The next check will be like the seventeenth, okay? So we need to make a decision. We have plenty of time to make the calculation so that we can have it reflected, however council wants it to be reflected by the July seventeenth check date.
So is it gonna cost sixteen hun, I mean, six hundred?
On one.
Or is it gonna cost eighteen thousand?
Yeah, it's a little confusing, my, I apologize. You know, when I was doing the numbers, what, what that eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, you know, where I was looking at it, it means that that's, if you look at the current payroll level, basically, that's about how much we would have to accrue into the prior year. But on just the three percent on one day is only about six hundred dollars additional, what it would, we would, it would cost us.
But it will affect, it'll affect our prior year fund balance once we get it, eighteen thousand dollars less, right?
Yeah, it'd be about eighteen thousand dollars less, plus the six hundred dollars, actually.
Less, less funds.
Eighteen thousand, plus another six hundred, yeah.
So eighteen thousand.
My explanation did not really, not really, not very fully explain the total ramifications, yeah.
I, I'd just like to say, it's my personal opinion, to wait the first pay period. I, I guess the budget was three percent. May's cost of index year over year was two point four, Social Security's two point five, federal employees got two percent, so. I mean, waiting two weeks to get three percent's not that bad, and they get, they'll get the full raise in their checks. So a part of a raise.
I'm, I'm still confused on where the eighteen thousand dollar.
I'm confused too, but I, I wouldn't wanna, wanna make them have to wait a whole month to get a raise. They wouldn't, wouldn't get the raise, won't be getting it for eleven months instead of twelve months, would they?
Eighteen thousand dollars.
They would get a little raise anyway, they'd just get a partial raise in the second pay period.
No, they could all.
Explain again about the eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand dollars, Mayor, that was, you know, if we take this first pay period that started yesterday, June thirtieth, and ends on July thirteenth, I believe, we're gonna have to accrue basically one day into last fiscal year. For one day, total payroll cost is about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. Now.
Total?
Total, correct. Now, on top of that, which unfortunately I didn't really get into and explain in the, in my email and the explanation, the additional cost would be about three percent, or roughly six hundred dollars. If, that's the additional cost, really, of what we're talking about. The eighteen to twenty thousand, that's just a timing of when we're, we're gonna recognize expense, whether it's last year or in the current year. But the true additional expense is about six hundred dollars to do the one day at the three percent.
But however you wanna say it, prior year fund balance is still gonna be eighteen thousand dollars less, right?
Plus about six hundred dollars, yeah.
Eighteen thousand, six.
Yes.
So, so would it be, say, twenty four, I mean.
Say twenty, yeah, yeah.
Eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be, more, more expenses are gonna be shifted back to the prior year.
But the net cost to the City of Lewisburg is gonna be six hundred dollars.
For that one day, yes, right.
That's basically what it is, the eighteen thousand is accounting that.
Right, yeah, yeah, the six hundred is just.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not an accountant.
So, but it's a, a small price, a small cost, in my opinion, to pay as opposed to making employees wait for then that next pay period. And then that check, they will not receive until July thirty, thirtieth or thirty-first.
I agree with you, I think it's a small cost. So I'm making them wait. It's my opinion.
Well, it's not, as I said, not, you know, there is past practice or precedent. And, you know, Gina did payroll for, I don't know how many years, Gina, so, and she can, as I said, I spoke to her this morning, and the city has made that COLA or adjustment effective in the past for up to, what, Gina, three? Maybe three days? No more than three.
Any further questions? It'll be on the agenda for Tuesday, correct? All right, what's, is that the last item?
Number twelve, other business.
Yes, sir.
Only, we just discussed, it'd be on the agenda, would, would it be a choice of going one way or the other? Would it be a yes or no, to do it or not to do it?
Well, it, it will be in there for the, the, for the, to move it back a day will be what it says. That's what it'll say. So if you vote to back it up a day, that, that covers it. Any further question? Any other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thomas? Ronald seconds the motion. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.